The knees are knocking, I'm ready. Oh, it's public speaking, it does it to everybody, I think. And that's why David Letterman used to run across when before he would come out, do you remember seeing David Letterman? No, it's because he was nervous and he would just run to get it.
Alright, looks like we are live. Um, thank you, everybody who made it out today. Um, I call this, uh, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, meeting of the Board of Finance to order. There you go. Oh, and we have, okay, Commissioner Pescoti, can you hear us well?
Yes, thank you.
Great, great to have you on, I love that we can do hybrid and we're getting better every minute. Um, so I, um, will start with item number two, approval of the minutes. I move to approve the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two Board of Finance's meeting minutes. Can I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Quesada, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, any opposition? Okay, so moved and presentation, so thank you, um, Treasure Burris for being here and, um, please, Madam Treasure, present, um, presentation of the Board of Finance.
Good after, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, thank you so much for being here this afternoon and it's in our new hybrid method, so not only are we here live, but we're also zooming out to everybody out there, so it's good to see Commissioner Pescoti on Zoom as well as our, uh, financial advisors that are also joining us by Zoom, so thank you very much. Again, my name is Nancy Burris, I am the Treasurer of Burnaleo County and I'm here to report quarter ending June thirtieth of fiscal year twenty-two. So I've got my screen up for the presentation. What do you all see? I don't know that you see anything, but.
Um, it will show, it would.
There it is.
There we go. There we go. So this is your end of the year fiscal report. And there's our usual agenda, table of contents, things that we're going to review. Uh, you're gonna see a couple of new slides, uh, that we picked up from, uh, the state when they talked to the Legislative Interim Committees, so we wanted to bring that, that material to you as well and share that, so let's go ahead and get started. First is the three latest years of tax collections that we've had, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one. And you can see there how much we're charged to collect, especially for this year, just wrapping up twenty-twenty-one property taxes, uh, charged to collect seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars. And, uh, we collected a whopping seven-hundred-and-fifty-four million, so we didn't leave too much uncollected. But again, that's pretty usual, uh, pretty standard. Again, taxes are collected in ten-year increments, so we have a ten-year tax roll. Uh, and after ten years, that year, that late year falls off and is presumed paid. Here's how we put it into percentages for collections. Uh, remember that for, um, this, the tax year twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, it was delayed because we did have a voter initiative on the November ballot, uh, that caused taxes to go out late, not until December. So everything was scooched back that first half, but then we got hit by a cyber attack as well uh, in January and, uh, you know, we were kind of, uh, rowing, paddling in the river and, uh, for a couple of weeks there. But I will say, as you look at this, it is amazing to see that for twenty-twenty-one, we collected ninety-seven percent of our taxes, so that, that was fantastic. And I reported that to you last quarter as well, that we really came back hard, came back strong when our systems came back, so we were, we were very proud of that.
Treasure first?
Yes, ma'am.
Has a quick question, did, when you say ten years and then that rolls off, does that mean that those collections are active, like we can keep, what does that mean when you say, is it just?
It means you don't get to collect, it falls off the tax roll.
But for the last nine years.
And it is presumed, um, paid, so when you're looking at that chart, what you're gonna see for when we start twenty-twenty-two is that twenty-twelve year will fall off. And again, because it's presumed paid, you don't go and collect, so. Thank you, no, it's a great question. Um, we did start our delinquent collections as usual with our delinquent tax mailing on June tenth. Uh, so, so that came in pretty good and I think I wrote down some numbers for you here. I just put them on my slides and not yours. Let me get that for you real fast, that, uh, we collected fourteen-point-two million dollars in June on delinquent taxes alone. And I know I keep beating the drum about my delinquent tax group, uh, but this just really reflects how much uh, they do collect and it's, and it's great, it really does help us, it helps all of our partners that we send that money to, so we're, we're pretty proud of that. Um, when you look at that ninety-six-point-eight, ninety-six-point-oh-three percent for twenty-twenty-one, remember that was ending June thirtieth. Just in one month for July, we jumped to ninety-seven-point-fifty-five percent and you go, oh Nancy, what's point-five percent? I'm going to tell you, so it's, even though it's a difference of point-five-two percent, that was four-point-seven million dollars in that month, so the percentages look low, but really it does, it does bring in quite a bit of money. When you look at property collections overall with our operations, you have things like our call volume in the top-left uh, graph there, we had kind of that anomaly in April where there were really high calls. But if you remember in April, we had finished coming out of our cyber attack, but we knew there were bubbles happening, popping up from that attack that we were finding out. Uh, so we had a lot of calls, like, you know, what, it was delayed, but then we couldn't take my taxes for three weeks and now you still want it in April for the second half? So we did, we got a lot of calls and that, that just shows you how much came through on that, but then May and June settled right down uh, as we expected it to, so we ended the year lower than we were the year before, which is good because under COVID, things were, were very different. These were other things that were a little bit more manageable than, you know, an, a worldwide pandemic. The one right below that is the delinquent account turnover to the state. This is when you'll see a change because we do report as of July first, what are the properties that are delinquent more than three years that we stopped collecting on and the state, Property Tax Division, has the responsibility to collect the taxes. So we only turned over five-hundred-and-seventeen properties to the state this year and I'm extremely happy to report that, you can see the drop from seven-hundred-and-fifty in twenty-twenty when the pandemic hit and hit big. Um, and we saw a lot of people, we had a lot of people, uh, not paying their taxes for very good reasons. Um, and a lot of the properties went over to the state and since then, we've been really attacking that. And that's again where our delinquent group comes into play, because they're really out there contacting people. How can we manage your budget, how can we work with you to start paying down your taxes? And again, the less you can turn over the state, the less that's gonna be auctioned off and really cause harm in many ti, many times for people. So we're glad to see that come down. The last one over there is just in general, when you look at delinquent collections, what are the different groups of collections that we do? And you can see there again, MH is manufactured homes, PP is personal property, AKA business equipment is what I call it, uh, and RP, which is the real property. The real property is what we can go after and then what we have to turn over to the state. The mobile homes, manufactured homes and personal property, we keep and can collect in-house. So you can see those, those totals there, not a whole lot of change from the year before. So that's good, very steady at that. Here's your property tax distribution. Again, I, I glumped together, that's not my technical term there. I glummed together some of our like or similar agencies that we distribute the money to, so you have your education piece, which is the largest amount, thirty-four percent, but again, that, that includes everybody, that includes APS, uh, includes the Public Charter Schools, C and M. It includes all of that. And then next is, uh, us, the county, Burnaleo. Uh, and then the, the third largest group really is the city and villages that we collect for on their behalf and send it out to them. Everybody thinks of Albuquerque, but, uh, don't forget about Los Ranchos, Tejeras, uh, all the other places that we collect for. The last big one is, of course, health, the U and M Hospital that we collect their mill levy for and turn it over to them. So those are the big four and, uh, but we also have the environment with AMAFCA, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts that we have and then the state, because we pay their geodet bonds as well. This is where I wanted to bring in some national figures for you to look at and to kind of compare, how are we doing when we talk about distributing taxes? And again, you can kind of see New Mexico, um, on the left, those, those three big pie pieces, that's the pie pieces I want, um, compared to the national average. And you see, they, they line up almost perfectly, uh, the school districts, the municipalities and then the counties, uh, are all the big three right there and that's exactly how ours go as well. And that was reported out, uh, based on the census from, uh, DFA, their property tax facts. And that's the Department of Finance and Administration here in New Mexico.
Madam Treasure?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back one more slide? Gotcha, so under the education, uh, slice, uh, is U and M in there or is it just C and M in terms of higher education?
It's, um, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, it is only C and M, we do not collect U and M, uh, bonds. Uh, the only thing we collect for U and M is strictly the U and M H mill levy.
Gotcha, gotcha, so then, uh, the next slide, please?
Oh, sorry, wrong way.
So then with the higher education, ten percent, that's to C and M?
Uh, that probably is because that's a state map, so that New Mex, that higher education is C and M.
Okay, gotcha, alright.
And all the other higher ed institutions, so you think of tech down in Socorro, U and M, NMSU, Eastern, Western.
For the state, gotcha, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good catch on that. Oops, I'm going the wrong way, here we go. Uh, comparing property taxes, this is a big thing, uh, especially when, uh, our state is looking at uh, changing some of how we, how we tax. And, uh, so I lifted this from, uh, the Legislative Finance Committee when they were talking with the, uh, the Tax Foundation about how do we compare our property taxes versus nationally, state by state, how we're going? And I will first put that disclaimer on, you can see it in the small print there, that this is just residential, this is owner occupied, it does not include renters, it does not include business. So I, I do want to make that clear, uh, and again, it's kind of dated, it's based on twenty-nineteen. And, um, this is where, when you look at New Mexico and it says number forty, this is a good thing. We want to be low on the charts for having low property taxes. Uh, if you kind of look at the map and glance around, you're gonna see that your three highest, your first highest actually is New Jersey, I put on my Jersey accent. Uh, and number two is Illinois, probably because of the Chicago metro area and then New Hampshire is number three. And, uh, so those, those are your high cost of living states, if you think about it. So again, they have higher, much higher property taxes, uh, than we do. So it's nice to be fortieth out of fifty, um, the thing is, is when you look down and see who fiftieth is, it's Hawaii. So when, when you think of retirement, we're going to Hawaii. And we're gonna talk bank balances and collateral. And I've got my Deputy Treasurer, Ryan Travelstead, who's gonna take over, I'm gonna take a breather and a drink of water. And Ryan, take it over, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasure. Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, my name is Ryan Travelstead, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Um, this slide here, we discussed it, uh, we discuss it every quarter, but just a quick recap, um, what this slide displays is the collateral balances on our operating bank balances. So in the worst cases, scenario, if, say, in the, the top-left, uh, section here, that's our Wells Fargo bank balances. So if Wells Fargo was to ever go out of business, um, go into conservatorship, we would get the collateral that's pledged on our balances so that we would be able to recoup some of those balances. Um, so that's what essentially what this slide will show, the top-left Wells Fargo balance shows that we had twenty-three-point-six million of uninsured and uncollateralized balances, so in the event that Wells Fargo, uh, this was as of June thirtieth, so in the event that Wells Fargo was gonna go out of business, we would lose twenty-three-point-six million dollars. Um, that risk to, in my opinion, is pretty low and this, those balances change regularly based off of the value of the collateral that's pledged. Um, but this is something that we track very regularly and we report on every single quarter to you and every month to the Investment Committee Working Group. And any other accounts are, are fully insured and fully collateralized. And we could do a, a quick economic update, I don't want to steal too much of the thunder from the GPA team. Uh, they have a, a way better finger on the, a finger on the pulse, uh, than I do here, but essentially, there's a lot of mixed information. Uh, we have some really encouraging jobs numbers, inflation numbers maybe aren't super encouraging, so it's kind of conflicting on, you know, where things are gonna go and what the Federal Reserve, Federal Reserve will do. Um, GDP contracted for the first two quarters of twenty-twenty-two and so that's maybe a technical recession, but I think that's, there's still a lot of mixed data out there to know, you know, exactly what's going to happen. And here locally, the, it seems like the, uh, unemployment insurance claims have stabilized here in the, in the state. We're still down around twenty-seven thousand jobs, um, compared to pre-pandemic levels. And then Albuquerque housing, um, yeah, I'm sure it's no surprise, but there's, yeah, houses are moving very quickly. Uh, price, the value of houses has increased quite a bit. Um, that's starting to slow as of June thirtieth with the Federal Reserve increasing interest rates. Um, so that's another, uh, watch item that we'll, we'll kind of keep, uh, keep an eye on. This next slide we'll go over, um, may look familiar, but with a little bit of a, a twist here on the, the bottom-left side, we have a, we created a bucket for the bond proceeds portfolio. Previously, we reported that out in a separate section in this report, but we thought going forward, uh, it'd be best to roll it up into the, um, the parent or like the, the total portfolio so that we get one snapshot of all of the funds that we have available. Um, so that's there. Um, this next series of slides, I wanted to kind of illustrate a, a picture of what we do in the Treasurer's Office and when we talk about investments, like, why do, why are we even talking about investments? The main thing here is there's a disconnect between the timing of when money comes into the county and then when money goes out of the county, so main inflows that we get are property tax collections, gross receipts taxes every month, fees for services, uh, things of that nature. Um, those come in throughout the month and at the same time, there's payments that go out to vendors, um, the payments to, for payroll and for the debt service payments, those go out. And so there's a disconnect between when that money comes in and when it goes out. So what we'll do in the Treasurer's Office is we'll kind of match when we anticipate the money that comes in, when that will go out, if, if we anticipate that that'll go out within, uh, less than thirty days, we'll transition that into the, the blue highly liquid bucket, earn a little bit of interest there. And if we, um, know, if we think that those funds will, won't go out for a little bit longer, say into like, uh, thirty days to a year timeframe, we'll, uh, put that, invest that money into the gray liquid bucket. And so a lot of what we do there is to match, um, our payroll and our debt service payments because we know what those outflows are gonna be pretty consistently. So when we have some extra money, we know, hey, we're gonna have a ten-million-dollar debt payment on, you know, December first, we can go and buy a ten-million-dollar investment to mature on December first to make that payment. Um, so that's how the, the liquid bucket works. And then to bring in the core portfolio, uh, what this is, is this is money that the, the, that we don't anticipate that the county will need to spend in the near future. So a good example of this is the DFA three-twelfth's reserve requirement. So, yeah, not really likely that we'll need to spend that down, so we can invest that out a little bit farther than we can the money that we'll have to turn over to pay to vendors. And then the last bucket here is the bond proceeds bucket. Um, what this is, is when voters authorize the county, um, to issue a bond to, for public safety or for libraries or to pave roads. Um, when we sell that, that debt, it takes some time before we get the money and then start paving the roads. So we'll invest that money, but we invest it according to a draw schedule that the Finance Division works really closely with all the different project managers um, so that we can time when those mature, those investments mature to meet the payments, to pay the vendors, to pave the roads and to, um, you know, the different, uh, projects that are going on around the county. So with that, um, here's a, a slide that gives a, a snapshot of all of the, um, cash that's available, cash investment set of, that's available, you'll see here in the top, the top line, the bank of twenty-seven, roughly twenty-seven million. That's a balances in our operating bank accounts, so that's money that we have to pay vendors. Um, yeah, tomorrow, well, this was as of June thirtieth, so as of July one, that's money that was available to pay, uh, vendors. We had an additional two-hundred-and-forty-two million in the blue highly liquid bucket. We had, uh, remember that's less than thirty days, uh, two-hundred-and-twelve million in the gray liquid bucket, two-hundred-and-four million in the green core bucket and then thirty-two million of bond proceeds that have been unspent. And so if you see as you, um, go to the right, we'll have the market value of those, those holdings, uh, the percent of the total and then the book yield and the years to maturity. And I want to draw attention to the, the book yield and years to maturity column as a way to measure what we're doing in the Treasurer's Office. So, um, the, the highly liquid bucket, the way that out, that operates, it shouldn't be invested out more than a year because that's money that we need to, uh, use to pay bills that are gonna be coming due within thirty days. So if we ever report to you and you see that, that years to maturity, if that says one or higher, two, you might say, hey, wait, why, what's, what's going on there, that should be really low so that we can have, um, some cash available to, to pay vendors. Um, and same thing as, as the balance, if, you know, we have two-hundred-and-forty-two million in there now, if we report to you and we have twenty-seven million dollars in the operating bank account and we only have five million dollars in the highly liquid account, we know something's going on there, we don't have enough money to, to pay bills that are gonna be coming up. Um, and then same with the liquid account, that should be around, it, it fluctuates based off of when we, we look at the snapshot. Um, so it's somewhere between one year and in, sometimes it's a little less than a year based off of when things mature and, um, yeah, that's just kind of fluctuates throughout the, uh, the different time periods of the year. And then with the core portfolio, that's the, uh, the main interest income, uh, driving portfolio there, that's again, like the D, DFA three-twelfth's reserve funds, so that, again, that's funds that we're not anticipating to be spent um, in then, in less, less than a year. Um, and then same with the bond proceeds portfolio, we see that that's at a, a years to maturity of, of point-three, which, again, that's invested to meet those anticipated drawdown schedules for the, uh, capital projects. And I'll go to the next slide to kind of detail the individual holdings of each bucket. So again, in the highly liquid bucket, you can see here, everything's less than thirty days, total of two-hundred-and-forty-two million, roughly ninety-one million in money market accounts, a hundred-and-ten million roughly with the uh, State of New Mexico Treasurer's Office Local Government Investment Pool, uh, thirty-six million and five, with Bank of the West, five million with Main Bank and those are both insured cash sweep accounts, so those are fully FDIC insured. The next page here is the detail of the, the gray liquid bucket and you can see the breakdown here that there's around thirty million dollars that matures in less than thirty days, around a hundred-and-twenty-six million that matures within thirty days and a year and fifty-six million that matures greater than one year, but less than two years. And you can see the, uh, investment type breakdown there between money market, treasuries and commercial paper. And one more paid detail for the core portfolio, how this is broken down, so as we look at the total line here, we have not, around nine million that matures in less than thirty days, forty-four and a half, thirty days to a year, around fifty million between one to two years, thirty million in two to three years, thirty-eight, three to four and thirty-two and four to five, so it shows it's evenly balanced. It's not really, um, concentrated in one particular period.
I think I have a question, thank you yesterday for going over this with me and then to, to see it again today. If, if this is our core, is the, um, the less than thirty days, like all the other buckets also had less than thirty days, so why do we keep? So that this can also be highly liquid or trying to understand it all?
That, that's a very good question, um, and I think GPA, the, or the county's investment advisor manages this portfolio to bench, to what's called a benchmark and I can let them speak to that a little bit more clearly, but part of that benchmark includes having a little piece that is within that less than thirty days. Excellent question, thank you. Indeed, yes, and so what that is, is as we've purchased maturities, uh, previously, as those get closer to maturity, they'll roll down from the one-year to thirty-day portion as well. And then finally here, we have the, the detail of the bond proceeds portfolio, that's broken up between money, uh, around three million in money market account and, uh, twenty-eight million roughly in the US treasuries and seven million less than thirty days and twenty-five million between thirty days and one year. Alright, and then this slide here is a, a graphical representation of the, um, liquid bucket, the core bucket and the bond proceeds bucket to track, to show how, like, when money will be maturing to come in. And so I like this slide as it gives us a good gauge, um, to assess risk. In my opinion, there's kind of two main risks that, uh, that we have here, is that there's gonna be one, we invest in a, uh, an entity that will not give us our money back. And then the second risk will, is that we will have, um, too much money invested when we'll need the money to pay bills. So this is a good way to see that, um, to, to kind of measure that second risk is that we have, you know, a hundred-and-ninety-five million dollars and, maturing less than, in the thirty days to one-year period and then forty, forty-five million between those three portfolios maturing within less than thirty days, so. In my opinion, that's a, a good gauge to say, hey, where we, do we have enough money that's gonna be available to meet, meet some outflows to pay vendors in the near future. And all of this, that, um, this, kind of the third piece of our safety, liquidity and yield goals, there's the yield portion and here is a, uh, quarterly breakdown of the investment income. And here is a quarterly breakdown of the investment income. And so you can see for fiscal year twenty-two, we ended up with three point one million in investment income. Again, that's down from the, the previous year, but again, as interest rates slowly went down, actually rapidly went down. They're starting to creep back up. And then you'll see I'm anticipating next year that that three point one million will be back up on the four to five million dollar range. And with this, I think now we will turn this over to, uh, Deanne and Rashad with Government Portfolio Advisors. Deanne, Rashad, can you, uh, can you hear us?
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, we can.
Okay. I will drive if you just want to tell me next slide.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you Deputy Treasurer and Madam Treasurer and members of the board for having us. It's a real pleasure to be here. So we can jump into it. We always like to take a step back, I think, to look at the foundational components here of how we develop and conceptualize an investment strategy, certainly, um, as we review the execution component here. So if you want to, uh, so if we're on our building block slide, uh, we like to just think of this uh, in a very structured way as it pertains to your policy and this is very much in priority order. So we look at investment strategy holistically and in priority, priority order of safety, which is preservation of capital. How we're going to maintain liquidity requirements. And then once we have those satisfied, we're going to look into that core bucket, um, that Deputy Treasurer talked about and see if we can earn additional income there in that particular bucket as it pertains to yield by looking at market opportunities and diversifying appropriate. So in those contexts, we're going to consider all relevant risks, uh, for the portfolio, uh, which is going to include, but wouldn't necessarily be limited to interest rate risk, credit risk, reinvestment risk. And then taking into consideration your policy and your risk tolerance, uh, for the county. So those building blocks are really going to shape our investment strategy and are going to continue to drive our disciplined approach. Uh, so as we move on to the next slide, um, here's just a summary overview and a little bit repetitive of the portfolio balances that you just saw, but just to level set, you know, we have the bond proceeds, the highly liquid, the laddered liquidity and the investment core portfolios. A Deputy Treasurer just went through those balances, but, um, overall, we really like how this portfolio is structured and certainly, uh, how well, uh, cash heavy it is at the moment. And we've certainly taken opportunities over the course of the past fiscal year to really take advantage of the yield environment. Once we have liquidity solved for and add to the core to, you know, increase that book yield and take advantage of some of those opportunities. We'll talk a little bit more about the risk management piece later on, but, um, you know, in the investment cores, when we really look at the duration piece and we are really tight to the determined benchmark, which is the zero to five year treasury, um, drawing your eye to the third line in that grid. The allocation by asset class there just gives you a breakdown of the securities that we're invested in. Again, this is the total portfolio and as mentioned, we really like how the portfolio is structured and really like, uh, how we're diversified at this time. And from there, uh, what we'd like to do is, is just review the strategies for each specific portfolio that we determined a quarter ago. And then once we go through that review briefly, we'll go into, uh, more of a forward looking approach for recommendations on the existing portfolios. But looking at the review, starting with the core investment portfolio, um, it was determined that we were going to deploy about a hundred and thirty-five million from each liquidity bucket to the longer term investments of the core portfolio. I'm using those synonymously. As of now, we've deployed a hundred and ten million of that, a hundred and thirty-five million. The last twenty-five million dollar block is going to come from a maturity in the laddered liquidity portfolio. That's coming due on September eighth. Most of these maturities have been across the front end of the yield curve. We've been very much, uh, anchored to the strategy that we've established in that zero to five year space, um, and really take advantage of some really, uh, good yield opportunities. So in that time, you know, over the deployment of that a hundred and ten million, the overall book yield, uh, has increased from point eight two percent uh, at the beginning of May to a little under two percent as of August ninth. So really, uh, taking advantage there of, uh, being able to lock in those yields, which is incredibly important now with a lot of the uncertainty that we're seeing in the market. As we look to the bond proceeds portfolio, um, we are really investing to meet the expected cash flows to make sure those funds are available, uh, when they come due. We recently invested four point six million in new bond proceeds. Uh, the average purchase yield there was just under three percent. So really just another illustration of being able to appropriately map out cash flows and matching, uh, when those payments are going to come due and being able to take advantage of the current yield environment. The grid to the right is just a transaction level of the securities we purchased, um, across that maturity structure that yielded that two point nine three percent. And then as we look to the laddered liquidity portfolio, uh, under policy, you know, this portfolio, we have to make sure sixty million is maturing under one year. So we've laddered out that portfolio in five million dollar increments. So that just means that five million dollars is going to be maturing every single month. Um, and we've been very disciplined with that approach to, to manage to that particular constraint. Uh, another area where we're able to use short-term, uh, marketable securities to capture some yield in that highly liquid space. So able to invest excess liquidity in commercial paper and other short-term securities. That average yield was a bit over two percent. And then as part of kind of circling back to that core portfolio deployment, we transferred of the hundred and ten million that we put to the core, seventy-five, uh, million, uh, came from maturities in the laddered liquidity portfolio. So from there, we want to go into each portfolio and just provide recommendations on how we're going to look at strategy going forward. When it comes to the core, I think the overall theme is, you know, as we evaluated the existing strategy, we really like where we're at and we, we like that, uh, duration profile. We like the diversification that we've, uh, established a quarter ago. And so the strategy recommendation is really to stay the course. Uh, we have that X, the additional twenty-five million from laddered liquidity coming due on September eighth with that maturity. So that would be really a carryover from our latest, from our previous strategy that we'll deploy into the core. And then as we look at the risk profile of the benchmark, um, again, we think that the zero to five is really appropriate for the county, uh, the county's portfolio. The laddered approach really adds that additional layer of, of liquidity where you do have about twenty-five percent of the core long-term portfolio that's maturing with one, within one year. Now, we've been diligent to, you know, effectively manage that highly liquid and ladder liquidity portfolio where you have those reserves and liquidity, liquidity requirements solved for. But it is nice to have this laddered maturity approach to have, have those funds come due, um, should, should, uh, that be necessary. Uh, the duration target's going to be a little over two and, uh, we're pretty close to that. And we expect to try to maintain that, that duration target as we look at investments going forward.
And I'm going to, I'm just going to touch you Rashad real quick on that, on the question regarding why are we overlapping? You'll see between the policy and the structure that we're developing out is that we're getting all the portfolios to work together much more nicely. So by having this bucket within our, our benchmark and the structure of the core allows us to actually bring down that liquidity balance because we always have the money maturing in that core component. So that's really what you'll see both within policy and the structure of the portfolio that's rolling out here is that they're all more holistic and working together instead of very isolated. When you're managing just a one-year to five-year portfolio, you are then forced to sell securities when they fall below one year. And particularly in this type of market in order to align to the benchmark, in this type of market, we don't want to be forced to do anything. So we're able to move, let all those portfolios work together. So that's why there is some overlap, but we're accounting for that by bringing down that liquidity balances and balancing to the core.
And then number three is really going to look at your diversification when it comes to particular asset classes or securities. And as of now, uh, we recommend maintaining these strategic targets. So it'll be about fifty percent agencies, forty percent US treasuries and ten percent, uh, municipals. The pie chart on the right is just a, a graphical representation of that grid. As you might imagine, we're going to deviate a, a bit from the strategic targets, but maintaining within our tactical bands as we respond to the market as needed. Currently, uh, over the past year, we've really had to overweight treasuries just because of market opportunities and, uh, lack of issuance and supply in the agency market. That's coming back a bit, um, as we've seen with some of our recent transactions. But as we look at this particular strategy for the county, we still like these strategic targets and, um, we'll certainly have our eye on these particular targets as we look, as we look forward. And we definitely recommend that we maintain these, uh, strategic targets. And then our last point in the core portfolio will just be evaluating opportunities. Should, you know, we recommend additional funds be transferred into the core investment portfolio. Uh, we'll kind of see how the next couple of months play out. And then, uh, I know we have another meeting coming up on November fifteenth, so we'll kind of evaluate the fund balances and see if there's any additional recommendations we would make as we get toward the end of the calendar year.
Excuse me Rashad?
Yes.
Can you explain the, uh, just the rationale that you all approached this with? And I love the percentages. I think that's a, a better way to look at things. And then when you throw the dollars in on top of it to interpret the percentages, it, it just brings more clarity to it. But can you explain the rationale of why you chose those different percentages for the durations?
You're looking at the duration profile?
Right. For the targets.
Right. So the, the target portfolio, those duration bands are derived from the choice of benchmark. And we've chosen the zero to five year US Treasury benchmark. One, it's, uh, probably the most commonly used benchmark that we have across our public entities. We choose it for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one of those primary reasons being the risk profile that we want to manage to. So that duration number is that aggregate number just a bit over two. Now, the way that those, it's an all US Treasury benchmark and the way that it's constructed is across those duration bands that you see in that target portfolio line. So those are just the securities that are purchased and put, uh, and comprise that benchmark.
So if you could, uh, flip back to the chart, uh, a specific question would be the, sorry, the next sheet. Right there. So for the duration profile, for the, uh, zero to one year, the target is twenty-four point one five versus currently it's a twenty-six, right?
Yeah. So the current portfolio would be the county's portfolio.
Right.
So the, the county's portfolio, right, has twenty-six percent maturing in under one year. Whereas the target portfolio treasuries ha, has about twenty-four point one five percent of that portfolio maturing under one year.
Right. So that will become our new goal, right? Is that target portfolio?
Yes. And it's actually the same goal. It's so, a couple of things that we manage to these percentages. So we're always looking to kind of generally align to the benchmark percentages. And that's actually the exact same strategy we set forth last quarter.
Right. Why twenty-four point one five versus twenty-five percent? And thirty-one point seven seven versus thirty percent? Just, uh, uh, interested in your methodology.
Sure.
That's a great question and I, I'm going to address that. So the benchmark is made up of the outstanding issues in the marketplace. So it's not, um, us establishing that target. It's represents every security in the market that matures between zero and five years. So it will shift a little bit. If the, if the treasury issues a lot of five-year notes, we'll have a higher weighting to the five-year sector. So it's a market index that's not being manipulated by any particular person. It's just the market. So we will vary slightly depending on that shift that happens on the benchmark. And it's a guideline for us to make sure we're closely aligned. You, you typically won't see us at ten percent higher in one bucket. Well, we may vary plus two, three percent, just depending on that flow that changes. So it's the market and the issuance level from the US Treasury.
Perfect. Yeah, that explains it. That's, uh, I like the rationale and, um, that makes it easier to, to follow and make sure that we're following. It takes out the subjectivity to it. Thank you.
Great. Well, as we look to the bond proceeds, uh, recommendations, again, this is more of a stay the course recommendations where we're going to reinvest excess XX cash, uh, the dedicated maturities as directed. And currently that approval is on a trade by trade basis. And, uh, we've had very transparent and clear communications on those approvals and recommendations. And, uh, you know, that's what we'll continue to do in that portfolio. So really no, no new changes, just, uh, staying with the existing strategy there. And then as it pertains to laddered liquidity, um, we, the language we're using here is shifting to a true cash match portfolio. But in reality, we're just going to really take a, a, a more granular approach to using the maturities in the laddered liquidity to match exactly known operating expenses for payroll and debt service. Deputy Treasurer already alluded to this. So putting some numbers behind it, uh, we looked at cash flow forecast for fiscal year twenty-three as it pertains to payroll and debt service. That's approximately a hundred and seventy million. And so what we'd like to use the laddered liquidity for in our recommendation would be to deploy excess cash from highly liquid to laddered liquidity in order to line up and match those known operating expenses, uh, pretty much exactly. So when they come due, you'll have a maturity come due to be able to pay for those particular expenses that are known as we go through this fiscal year. So, uh, we already have seventy-six million that's available in laddered liquidity, in cash and in upcoming maturities. And then we would need an additional about a hundred million in funds that would be drawn from the highly liquid portfolio to fulfill the rest of the expenses coming due in the, in the fiscal year. So the way that that works is, uh, we would essentially produce an additional investment proposal that would align maturities over the next, a little under a year to any remaining expenses that weren't covered when it comes to payroll and debt service. So the grid here is a sample investment proposal that we would do for, uh, the laddered liquidity portfolio to directly match payroll and debt service expenses over the coming year. So this recommendation, what it boils down to is transform, transferring a, a bit of cash from the highly liquid portfolio to the laddered liquidity portfolio to directly match, uh, known expenses for payroll and debt service. And I will note, this is a common theme, uh, throughout all of the portfolios and really healthy investments. But, um, you really have to take the market that you're given at a lot of, in a lot of cases. And, um, in this case, being able to match payroll and your debt service expenses not only produces a lot of transparency, uh, for the county and, uh, kind of the, you know, ability to track some of, some of those known expenses maybe in a bit more fluid way, but it also allows you to take advantage of some of the shorter term yield opportunities that we have. We don't know how long those will last, of course. The market's quite uncertain and volatile. But as of now, uh, this sample investment proposal was produced, uh, just within a few weeks. And it's almost about three percent in weighted average purchase yield by looking at US treasuries over the coming year to match those, uh, maturities with those expenses. The next slide for the operating portfolio components is just bringing all of those recommendations together. Like I said, a lot of, most of our recommendations are stay the course. The biggest change, uh, is really the last slide that I talked about in terms of transferring about a hundred million from highly liquid to the liquidity laddered portfolio. So you see those targets shift around a bit, but if, um, you turn your attention to just the target column for highly liquid, if we were to transfer that hundred million, the target would be close to a hundred and thirty million. Uh, with a min and max range of fifty to three hundred, the liquidity ladder would increase to close to two hundred and fifty million. And then the operating core portfolio, um, that, uh, from a few slides ago, we still have twenty-five million that will be transferring from the laddered liquidity to the core portfolio as part of our, uh, previous strategy. So that balance would get closer to, to eighty-five. The current, you can see the current book yield that's as of August ninth. We would expect in the current rate environment that the book yield on the liquidity laddered portfolio would increase a decent amount. as we match those expenses. And then as we reinvest in the operating core and add that twenty five million in the coming weeks, we'd expect that to to come up a bit too. And then just one more note on the duration target. We do continue to recommend the zero to five year all treasury benchmark. That's around two point one, it's two point oh seven as of that date. And the total of the core portfolio for the county is about two point one one again as of eight, nine. And our mid-max is usually we manage to plus and minus twenty five percent. And as of now, we really like being very close to that target of two point one. The last slide is just a summary of recommendations across each strategic area. So across each portfolio, I think we're going to talk about the investment policy in a little bit more detail. Some changes that will be recommended there. And then for the core portfolio, just be maintaining the existing strategy and benchmark. For bond proceeds, it'll be maintaining the existing strategy and matching those expenses. And then the laddered liquidity, just shining a light on some of those known expenses and deploying a bit more capital from highly liquid to laddered liquidity.
Thank you, Rashad. Appreciate that. And Deanne as well. So that gives you the sneak preview of some of our strategy that we're going to be talking about as well as some of our investment policy recommendations that we're going to be making. But to finish up the the report, just talking about some other office news, wanted to let you know that we are working on a new, it's, it's not new, but it it'll be going to a cloud environment with the public access module for property searches. We know that this is already in place on the assessor side. They have that module. We chose not to have it many, many years ago because it didn't fit our needs. And now as we look at it, that module has really come about very nicely from the vendor. And so we're going to move to that public access module for our property searches. So again, it'll provide consistency for our taxpayers when they're going back and forth between the assessor and us. Those modules won't look so different. The searches of what you put in won't be so different and kind of scratching your head like, why am I doing that? And again, it's going to reduce the maintenance that we have on that. Instead of two different modules, it's going to be a very two modules, but the same module. Talking about delinquent collections, again, just wanted to highlight how much we collected as a total for the fiscal year. So you can see that thirty four point seven million is is wonderful. Again, that's from June, from July one to June thirtieth for the whole year. So I I don't think I have anybody in the audience from my delinquent staff. Don't tell them because they're not getting a portion of this if they lived in the private world. So it's, this is when it's nice to be government, I guess. The investment audit, I think all of you saw the the report from the audit committee and that we passed that investment audit. There were two comments about that were made there and and we were expecting those because quite frankly, we pointed the auditors in that direction. There's new software that came about with the merchant services, the teller and cashiering way of doing things. And we really wanted them to look at it and to give us feedback. So when we get comments like that from our auditors, we don't think it's a bad thing. We think it's a good thing and think it's it's more eyes looking at the issue and telling us how we can approve and put in whatever structures we need to make it be the best it can be. Again, you know this too, cleaning up issues from our cyber attack right on the heels of that tax delayed tax bill. That was very challenging. We had that. But again, we continued outreach as soon as, you know, COVID was lifted and we could get back out. We did that. So put a little collage together, picture collage of some of the outreaches that I did. We had some cash handling teamwork. I went out to Commissioner Piscotti's Los Vincinos Community Center out there and and talked with forty two children aged, what, six to thirteen? Gosh, and I was, I was just flabbergasted. There's about five of them that already have savings accounts. They've been to the bank. They know this. And I, you know, I I'm just delighted with that. So that was, that was a good trip. And then the the bottom left, we had a premier historian and archivist from our community, Sue Palmer, also known as Mo Palmer, and come talk to us just about the history of how Albuquerque has developed. And wanting, I wanted my staff to know that, but then I thought, well, I think everybody should know that. So I invited the, all the employees in the building and and even not in the building, but Burnley County employees, come hear this. Because it is fascinating how we developed. And then on the bottom right, we got a a new machine in the building, if you haven't seen it. Partnering with the Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority, their payment kiosk. Not only are we the ones that moved out of Civic Plaza, they also moved out of Civic Plaza. And their customer service building is kind of like three bus stops, three buses away. And a lot of people were talking about it's kind of a remote location unless you have a car. And so working on this kiosk together, we said, sure, bring bring it in. And managed a nice contract there where we're handling, you know, getting the money out of it every day. They use the same bank we do. So it just goes, it's a separate, what is it, bag? But it's still going to Wells Fargo. So just, just some of the things that we're doing here. And then, of course, you have your appendix here for your performance metrics as well as your tax maintenance report. If that tax maintenance report is really interesting, there's your full ten years. But this is key, especially for many of us elected that, you know, we get hit with questions about, well, how much did you pay APS? There it is. And it's the June report. So it's for the fiscal year of what we totaled there, what we got them. So it was very nice to include that for you. I know we're, we've got a lot to cover, so we're going to continue moving right through. Okay. We're going to change out. Thank you.
Yes, please proceed. Yes, Madam Treasurer, to present.
All right. So we're going to talk about the investment policy review and some changes that we're recommending. As usual, in our August meeting, we always present to you the changes. We reviewed it. The legislative session is over, so any changes they had specific to the law and property taxes, we look at. So it's always a good time to come with you with changes. And we're doing that. And we've got, we, we just crammed your packet full, really, of of all this information. But truly, that's, that is your information. So you know everything we know. You've got a redlined copy. You've got a clean version. You've got notes that tell you what changed, what moved from this to that place. Because again, what what I really wanted to do was to take a national format of best practices and apply it to our investment policy. That had never been done since I'd been treasurer. And it was really time to do it. So looking at our partners at GFOA, they had a very nice template that we used. And so we moved a lot of our sections in our current policy to match their template. And I masterminded this idea because quite frankly, I needed something that would allow a third set of eyes to review it. And by using this standardized template, I am then going to go to another best practice partner, the GIOA, which is the Government Investment Officers Association, who free of charge allows and provides for counties and other government entities to send in their policies and get it graded. Now, grading is always scary, right? How many points am I going to get? Am I going to fail? But again, remember what I said about the internal auditors. I like third and fourth sets of eyes looking at this. Because again, it lets us know where our strengths are, but it also lets us know where we need to really build in some things. Are there some things that we're missing? We don't know until somebody tells us, until somebody looks at it. And especially those best practice national practitioners, they see everything. So they're going to be able to give us, I think, a really good idea of how we're doing on that. So that's number one. So it looks very different from our old policy, but don't be scared. It's okay. Again, we looked at what kind of descriptors do we use when we talk about our securities and our investments? The old policies just took the section of statute, state law, and put it in. And that's fine. It is what it is, but it's not very friendly. It's hard to understand unless you know New Mexico state law. And that's not the goal of your investment policy. So why not make it clarified? Why not update it and use terms for securities as they are used out there in the world? So we changed that up and I gave you that change document. Thirdly, we talked about diversification and maturity constraints in our total portfolio. All four of those buckets. I'm not going to be talking to you about three buckets anymore. I'm going to talk to you about four. And you should know all those components and how they interrelate or how they don't. Maybe some of them are going to be standalone, more like the bonds. So we need to talk about maturity and securities or diversification on that. And you already heard some of that from GPA. The, the fourth one is the really big one. Because I'm talking about maturities on these securities, moving from where we've been at five years, moving them out. Let's take advantage of the market and let's go eight years. State statute says county treasurers can go out ten years. We may not be ready for that step, but I think we're all ready to take advantage of this new market, the new opportunities that are out there. And we still have our guardrails on, and we'll talk about what those guardrails are, to be able to go to eight. So, and it doesn't mean that I'm going to move everything to eight years. Absolutely not. But I want the flexibility. I think you know I have the guardrails. And it's not just I have the guardrails. You have the guardrails as well. We're all fiduciaries in this. And I think we can do it. The other one is the important guardrail of this average, total average maturity. It has been at three years. I'm like, well, you know, if we're going to go a little bit longer on our maturity, maybe we need to tighten that up to two and a half years. Let's, let's really keep the guardrails on. We know we're going to be having money in that highly liquid account coming off. We're going to have the cash. But let's not forget about risk. Let's have the guardrails. So now you see those two charts on the bottom. The, the one on the left more or less talks about number two, the description of these securities. And then also what's the maturity and what's the rating of those securities? And, you know, ratings are kind of odd, especially for securities. We think of just grades when you get a test back, A, B, C, D, sort of like that. So, but our state statutes dictate what those levels of ratings are. And it's important to us because all of ours, all of our bonds that we set out are triple rated. We want to be able to buy the best. And the best is triple or triple A plus. But we can go down to double A plus if you want. That's allowed, but we have to tell you that. So we put it all into a chart. I think it's much easier to read in a chart format than a written out format. And again, that's the template. The one on the right talks about maturity constraints. And this is where we're talking about going from that five years to eight years. And we broke it out again with, excuse me, with that under thirty days. Ten percent of the total portfolio will be under thirty days. The one year, twenty five percent. Five years, ninety percent of our total portfolio will be there for maturity. So when you're looking at what's going to be under eight, it's really only the difference between that five and eight years, which is ten percent. I don't want to go wild. Don't want to go crazy. That's not what we're about, right? We're about taking those risks in an educated, strategic fashion. So only ten percent of the total portfolio will go past that five years up to the eight years. Again, it's going to be very balanced and you're going to see that. You've seen some of our charts already. And you'll be able to gauge all of that. You look at the maturity constraints, there we have it, of the weighted average maturity at two and a half. It's not going to be at three years. It's going to be at two and a half, keeping the guardrails on. And then when we talk about callable securities, it's at twenty five percent. We want to keep that limited. There's lots of other things in your packet. Those are the five highlights that I wanted to present. And I know we have GPA still on, so we can take any of your questions or discussion or good, bad, indifferent.
Thank you so much, Treasurer Burris and GPA and everyone who worked on this. Any discussion, comments by the commission?
Thank you, Treasurer Burris. I think these are great additions, especially going out eight years from five. I look forward to when we can get to ten, but this is great foundational changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Piscotti only because I just want to make sure I'm not missing any opportunity or I didn't see you.
No, no, thank you. No comments.
Um, I, I just want to say I'm very thankful. I feel like I keep learning from you all and I'm thankful for all the skilled folks on our team. I really appreciate the, that your, your work to get us on a nationally best practices model that we can continue to be a good model here at the county. So thank you so much for all this work.
You're very welcome. Glad to do it.
So I would like, I move to approve the changes to the investment policy.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. And I, any discussion? Great. All in favor? Or actually, I need to call the role. Madam Clerk, please call the role. Okay. Okay. Okay, okay. Because we have a participant on the.
Commissioner Piscotti. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Vice Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
So called, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our Office of Finance, uh, thank you Treasurer. And you have a unanimous pass.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you. And are we, do we have the quarterly investment? Okay, yes. So quarterly investment strategy, Madam Treasurer, 10%.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to go back to the investment strategy. We, we talked about it already, GPA. And of course, changing our investment policy as we just did is, is a part of that. But again, I, I think you see where, you know, we have been, we had been struggling with this liquidity issue. A lot of national companies have been. And I think once we, we really did look at what comprises those four buckets and really lay it all out and see how we can interplay those buckets to the best of our ability, because we do have that fiduciary responsibility, it really helped us. And I think the, the five to eight years that we've been tracking cash flow on spreadsheets that are 11 by 14 printouts, we have really nailed it. We know our cash flow in and out, and whether we're awake or asleep. I think we've got it down. And we're very predictable. As you heard, we're very predictable on payroll. We're very predictable in our debt. And just the way we pay bills is also very predictable. And you know that from running a household budget. You know when your rent is due. You know when your P and M bill is due. You know when your car insurance is due. We know the same things. When is our insurance bill due? What about our fleet? When's it time to buy a new car or a couple new trucks? What is it we need? And again, we know those things. So it's very easy to bring in a new strategy using that cash match system of, I've got payroll. I know I got it this time and this time. Let's manage to that. So it's, it's really, everything is really truly coming together. And now if we can just get that economy going, I think we'll be doing wonderful. Ryan, did you want to add anything?
No, I think the only other action is to provide the advice and consent on item number five.
And GPA, was there anything you wanted to add? I probably missed something.
No, I, I thought that was excellent, and I, I'm really excited to be able to go forward with this new policy and, and bring a more holistic process to the county's program. So it's, it's great approval and appreciate, it was a lot of work on the treasurer's part and the treasurer's team, and everybody really participated really well to get the right policy for the county.
Thank you, appreciate that. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I will motion, move to give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategies outlined in the Board of Finance report.
A second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Benson.
Aye.
Madam Chair Barbola.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Treasurer Burris and team for the great presentation and, and work.
Thank you, very glad to. Thank you for your time this evening.
And I will announce the next Board of Finance meeting will be Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. Board of Finance at 4:00 PM, Ken Suntis Commission Chambers. There's no other business. This Board of Finance meeting is adjourned. And wonderful to welcome all our guests for, assuming the Burnley County Commission meeting, we just completed the Board of Finance meetings. I think we'll take just less than five.